Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council Meeting for Monday, November 13, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May, here.
Here.
Pollocka.
Here.
Mayor Protem Piana.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here. Thank you.
I'd like to move, we excuse Mayor Protem Piana.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Oh, nope. We have some corrections, don't we?
Correct.
I'd like to add consent agenda item O, which is the approval of the proposed smart vehicle lease agreement contingent upon obtaining appropriate insurance as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director. And then I would like to suggest we add consent agenda item Q, which is the Small Business Saturday proclamation.
All right.
And I would also like to add, have an amendment to the agenda, that we add Cindy with the C-DDA as presentation C and our state representative, Robert Wittenberg, as presentation D.
All right.
So now I make a motion to accept the agenda with those amendments.
Support.
All right. Moved by Pollocka, supported by Martin to accept the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Marty, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda as amended is adopted. We're moving on now to presentations. One of our more fun presentations each year is the Bootification Awards. And so the good folks at the Bootification Committee, Robin, are you going to present those this evening?
We are.
Excellent.
Good afternoon, evening, everyone. This is the next of the last awards that we'll be presenting in 2017, and it is the Bootification Awards. Before Halloween, we were accepting nominations for various homes in the four quadrants of Ferndale. And once we received those nominations, we then took a tour, the commission did. And so we sort of scared up a bus, courtesy of the city, and took a little drive around and visited all of the various houses. So the first house that we're going to stop at was the Northeast Winner. It was in 140 East Maplehurst. And I have to tell you, I am pretty amazed at some of the decorations that the Ferndalians really pull out for Halloween. This one actually took up the entire front yard, extended up onto the porch, which had its own rooms, and even extended into the living room, which was just crazy. And so this particular property is owned by Warren Moshe, and so we want to congratulate them. We did manage to also get pictures made with all our little signs in them, too, so that was also great. Second house is one that has become a local celebrity. It's the, what we have termed, the Pirate Ship House on 537 East Hazelhurst. This is owned by Carol and Kevin Pierce, if the tax records are correct. And it really envelops the whole front of the house, too. And I don't know how many skeletons there are, but there was a motley crew full of them all over the place there. So it was pretty amazing. And if you didn't go by and check it out, Channel 7 and Channel 20 was there. The next house in the Northwest quadrant. Now, I will have to put a little shout-out to the folks in the Northwest. They really don't seem to embrace Halloween quite as much as the other three quadrants do. I don't know why, but this particular winner, some of you may know Melissa Wilson. She's very active in the neighborhood and is her home. And she had a huge eight-foot-tall spider standing out in her front yard with webbing all over the tree and a quite funny cemetery, if you stopped and read the tombstones, over there to one side. The last home was in the Southwest quadrant, and this one is owned by Melissa Bays. And it, like a couple of the other winners, really hit every facet of what we're looking for when we're looking for decorations. First of all, it took up the whole front yard and extended all the way around the house into the backyard and garage. It was very interactive. There were lights, there was sound, there was, I mean, it was just crazy awesome. And so there you have it. Those are the four winners of the Bootification Awards.
Excellent.
The next one coming up is the Holiday Lights. And the nominations are going to be tentatively set to be received by the 19th, and then we will take our last bus tour of the year on the 21st. So we encourage everyone who's not already following us on Facebook to do so. The Ferndale Bootification Commission has its own Facebook page, and we will be, we have already posted all the photos of the winners for the Bootification, and we will be encouraging everyone to nominate themselves or their neighbors for the Holiday Lights. Thanks so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Our next presentation is the Ferndale Area District Library Quarterly Report, and the new, can we still keep calling you the new director for a while?
I'll probably be new for a couple of years.
No, not a couple of years, but at least a year, Jenny.
I was director for five years in the last place I was, and I was still the new person in town, so I'm used to it. Oh, no, I got it, thanks. So I'll be really quick. So if you want me to slow down, let me know. I'll also tell you, we have, I've already uploaded this on our website in the About Us section where we put all of our agendas in minutes, so if you would like to go back and look at it at a different time, it's there as well.
Excellent.
So I wanted to go a little bit over our kind of general quarterly statistics. So this is July, August, and September of this year. October was kind of a long-agenda city month, so we decided to wait till November to go through it. As you can see, most of our revenue comes from property taxes and our millage, so thank you very much to the city of Ferndale residents for supporting us. You can see some of our other sources of income. We've gotten most of, the bulk of our budget at this time of year, we'll just be taking in things like, you know, fines and services and, you know, a little bit more state aid the rest of the year, plus any contributions we get. For expenditures, I kind of broken it down to our main groupings on there. We have spent the summer hiring more people, so we are now fully staffed. We do consider ourselves a service industry in a way because a lot of what we do are programs, services, education, helping people. We have just about any question you might hear, people will bring to the library because they don't know where else to go. So we really have been focusing on getting enough people to be able to help people with their concerns and the issues they have, but also to keep them well-trained. So we have a really good staff retention. We have a lot of employees that have been there for years and years and years, and that really has helped us to, you know, increase, you know, our momentum and getting more things done. So we're really excited about the more services and things we can offer this year. We've greatly increased our books and materials, as well as the money for programming, and we have a lot of capital outlay that we're going to be doing in the next few months, so we haven't gotten into that just yet. So the library usage, I compared against 2016 and 2017, and the bottom line of everything is, everything is more. We have more people coming in, more people using the library, more questions from people, more cardholders, so it's definitely an increase in usage. We, as of October 1st, which is the next quarter, we are open seven days a week, so these are actually our numbers for just being open six days a week. So I anticipate another growth the next quarter for people because we're open one more day a week. And we've had a lot of people coming in on Sunday, so it's been really positive for people. So, again, these are all on the website. I don't expect people to find these hugely helpful. The only data I didn't have was for computer sessions for the public computers from 2016, so I didn't have any data for that. I do expect, one of the capital outlay projects we're going to be doing is to be adding mobile printing, which means if you're on any computer or device anywhere, you can print through the cloud and just pick up your print job at the library. So we're expecting we'll see a dropage because we have a lot of people come in, open up their email, print a document, and go. So we think we'll see, you know, some of that taper off, so we're kind of excited we'll be able to start offering that, but that'll be sometime in the next couple of months. So we'll see a difference in that. The other thing that we're not able to measure currently is Wi-Fi usage, so the amount of people using the Wi-Fi 24 hours a day. We would have to change out, I think, some of our routers and, you know, in order to get, you know, like an access point or something in order to start collecting that data, but that's something we want to do soon because it just shows how many people are using it, the Wi-Fi in the building, and that's a lot of people we're not getting credit for.
Right.
So a little bit about our programming. You can see we've really increased our youth programming in terms of, and a lot of that is family-oriented, so we have, you know, it's not just the child coming, it's the whole family. So we're excited to continue to be able to fine-tune our program offering, what people are interested in. Sometimes we try things, and we have three people show up, and sometimes we try things, and we have 100 people show up. So a lot of it is just give it a shot, see what happens. Some of the standout programs we had, when we did tree sprouts in the park in August with the Parks and Recs, we had 91 people for that, so that was a great turnout. Some of the live animal programs we had, like Kidding Around With Goats was in there, we had 150 people for that. We had an exotic zoo, and we also had a DIY petting zoo for instruments, where they brought in instruments and the kids could try them out. We had 180 people for that. It was a little bit loud to hear so many discordant notes going through the library, but the kids had a good time trying out instruments, so we'll probably do it again. Here's just kind of a breakdown a little bit by how our circulation is. As you can see, print books are still very popular. We do have digital, both Overdrive and Hoopla, as a way for people to download books if they want to check them out that way. But still, people just like a book in their hand, and we've been able to increase our, you know, our selection for people, so we're excited to do that. You'll see that by age group, adult is much larger, but we also, that's where all the DVDs, the movies are, and so that kind of all falls into that, so. So a couple of the new resources we've added on, we have one called A to Z Maps Online. You can see it does all sorts of maps. You can do, you know, your basic geography ones, city, you know, US and world, but you can get history maps. The science ones are really nice, climate, topography. NASA maps are great. They show, you know, from space, you know, all sorts of things with the climate, going through flags, quizzes. You can use it for education. A couple of the ones on the bottom, I had, you can't see it, but you could blow it up on the website if you're looking at it. Detroit, 1835, it's a great little street map that's done. The other one's a polar expedition. So the big one that I have showing there, that's the climate map, and it's for sea elevation. You can play around with how much sea level will rise and how it would affect the coastal regions around the world. So the one I have is for the Netherlands, not looking good for them underwater. But another companion resource we have is A to Z World Travel. So if you choose to go to Amsterdam before they're, you know, while they're still above land, we have a resource for that to help you plan your trip. It doesn't tell you, like, you know, like TripAdvisor where it has the hotels, but it does all the cultural things like language and banking. It'll have up-to-date security alerts that are coming on, embassies, what kind of electrical outlets you need. And for here, you can see I put some of the main dishes you'd find in Amsterdam. And it has recipes, too, if you want to download some recipes from different regions.
Excellent.
Coming December 1st, we've got some more resources that we're adding on for people to use, using their library card, because it goes in through our website. Mango is, it has language courses, over 60 foreign languages, but also 17 English courses. So if it's not, English isn't your first language, you can learn it from your native language side. We're going to have magazines that are downloadable onto your device. There's over 260, last time I looked, so it'll just be another thing you can check out. We're excited about the T-Mobile Hot Spots. Basically, it's a little hotspot you can check out and take with you, so if you're going somewhere where you do not have reliable internet, it's free for you, and we have an unlimited data plan, so it'll be, it should be a lot of fun. We're going to plan on using it for our staff so we can do more outreach, and that way we know we always have an internet signal when we go places. Novelis is just another with books, has a great read-alike, so if you just love an author, but you don't know who else is like them, it'll give you a whole list of other ones to read, so you're never without a book. More information on all these things are on our website, ferndalepubliclibrary.org, and if you have any questions, please stop in. We are happy to talk about them.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for?
I'll do through the chair. Can you clarify for me, and forgive me if you said this, on your revenue slide?
Yes.
You've got a quarterly total that matches 80% of your annual budget?
Millage, yeah. When it...
So that's the millage money kicking in?
Yeah, and like penal fines come in once a year, and we've gotten that in. So, yeah, it's pretty heavy the first part of the year, so, but I was, I'm happy at least our expenditures are going to be evenly spaced out. We have one large spike when we pay our debt service payment for the bond, so that's one large spike we have during the year, but other than that, it's, you know, it goes along quite, but yeah, it all, we have summer tax for the distributed, disbursements for tax.
Thank you.
And just to confirm, over the Thanksgiving holiday?
Yes, we are closed Thursday through Sunday, so it's something the staff negotiated several years ago so that they could all go and take a trip. So with us being open seven days a week now, I don't mind them having a couple of holiday weekends during the year where they can actually take a break. So, anything else?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to see you, as always. All right. Our next presentation is the DDA, and Cindy is here to tell us a couple of things in particular that are happening in downtown Ferndale.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for fitting me in. I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for this proclamation and support of Small Business Saturday, and wanted to introduce somebody who's really integral to our Small Business Saturday team. This is Christina DeBarlo Mayo. She's a Ferndale resident. She's a volunteer on our Business Development Committee, and for the past few years, she's been the chair of our Small Business Saturday efforts, and she's really taken a leadership role and really helped us grow this program and be able to support our businesses all that much more. So she didn't know I was actually bringing her up here to say hello. She thought she was just coming for support, but...
Come to a council meeting, it'll be fun.
It'll be a lot of fun, yeah, but I just wanted the opportunity to be able to really thank her publicly from the DDA because it makes what we do stretch so much further, and it makes my job so much easier, so I really appreciate it. Small Business Saturday, in case you don't know, was established in 2010 by American Express, kind of in response to Black Friday, which is the big-box shopping holiday, to support local businesses and small businesses in downtowns. About $68 out of every $100 spent in the downtown in a local small business are reinvested back into that community through taxes and payroll and contributions to charities. I think probably in Ferndale, that number is even higher. So it's a really good opportunity to support our small businesses. We're working on compiling a list of businesses who are going to participate that day. Last year, we worked with the Chamber for the first time. This year, we're working with the Chamber again. We had about, I think, 40 businesses last year. We're hoping to have even more involved this year. So we will have a list out as soon as we get it. We start the day at 11 o'clock at the Rust Belt Market. We have a welcome station where people can come in and get the cool bags that we gave you earlier today, pick up shopping bags, pick up a list of the businesses that are participating, and also pick up a treasure hunt map. People that complete clues on the treasure hunt that'll take them from business to business are entered into a drawing to win prizes for those businesses. Level One Bank has just officially announced they will be there doing a cash mob at the Rust Belt Market, where they will hand out cash to people who will then hopefully turn around and spend that cash locally. So that's fun. They'll be there, I think, at 11 o'clock until the money runs out. We don't quite know how much they have yet, but it's always fun when somebody hands you a $5 bill and tells you to go shop. So that'll be fun. We're working on maybe a little entertainment that day with the Ferndale Community Concert Band, maybe the Together Men's Chorus. So details will be coming soon. Make sure you like or join the event on our Downtown Ferndale Facebook page so that you know everything that's happening as soon as we know it. Our other big event that's coming up is the Holiday Ice Festival, which is Saturday, December 9th. Santa will once again be arriving courtesy of the Ferndale Fire Department on a fire truck. This year, we're moving it across the street from Schiffer Park into the Planton Park parking lot. So we'll be right in the same area, just across the street. We'll also have the live reindeer. We'll have the warming tent, where the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission will be doing cookies and hot cocoa for charity. The Middle School Jazz Chorus will be joining us, I forgot, on Small Business Saturday for our tree lighting in the evening. So they will be there. We'll also have, hopefully, the Ferndale Community Concert Band and maybe the Together Men's Chorus and some other people providing some musical entertainment. We'll have our Urban Hay Ride again. As of today, I think we have 31 ice sculptures sold. We're hoping to get up to at least 50 again this year. So it'll be a fun event, and again, there's a Facebook event set up for that on the Downtown Ferndale Facebook page. Make sure you go there, tell us you're coming, and then you'll know everything that's happening as soon as we do.
And what's the date of that, did you say?
The Ice Festival is Saturday, December 9th, and Small Business Saturday is Saturday, November 26th. 25th? 25th, 26th? 25th, sorry.
Yeah.
The welcome station is 11 to 2 at the Rust Belt Market or until we run out of swag, but shopping is all day and then hopefully all holiday season. 6 o'clock that evening is the tree lighting and the Woodward median. So we hope you will all join us, and we hope you'll all shop local for the holidays.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it. All right. In our final presentation, our state representative is here with us this evening, and so we'd like to give him an opportunity to tell us all the good news from Lansing, or bad news or...
Oh, yes.
Whatever the news might be.
There's definitely some bad news, some good news. So first, wanted to come and congratulate after a hard-fought battle, Councilmember Pollocka and Mayor Protem Piana and the mayor.
Thank you.
To congratulate you. I look forward to continuing our work together. Also, I was not here, but to thank you and congratulate you on the rainbow flag here. I think that's a wonderful addition to the community and just really exemplifies how open and welcome this community is. So wanted to just mention upcoming Coffee Hour coming up. We had one in Ferndale, was it last week or a couple of weeks ago? We had a Coffee Hour here. We had a really nice discussion, including Jenny Marr was there from the library, so it was a good discussion we have there. And the next one coming up is in Huntington Woods on Thursday, December 7th at 7:00 in the evening, if I have that correct. And it is at the Huntington Woods, I probably shouldn't have this on here, but I would guess it's at the library, in the basement of the library. So that will be coming up, so I encourage people to come in, and again, it's a really informal setting where you can make recommendations, suggestions, if you have any questions, you want to hear about, you know, in a smaller setting, what's going on in Lansing, then I encourage people to come out there. And if you can't make it to the Coffee Hour, again, I'm always available. Call me 517-373-0478. Email me at robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. You know, I like to be as accessible as possible, so anytime you ever need anything, please let me know. I'll be brief, just some of the things that have been going on in Lansing. Probably the two main issues that you've been hearing about. One is with the no-fault system here, our auto insurance. You know, we have, we pay high rates, and I'm part of that as well. And so there was a plan that was pushed by Mayor Duggan that he worked with Lana Teis, who's a state rep from Brighton, and the Speaker of the House, and I voted against the plan. It, to be honest with you, it wasn't a really good option. They would have ultimately cut benefits for people, and if someone was in a catastrophic accident, they would have been forced onto Medicaid, in essence. And in other states, you have the opportunity to sue. Here, you don't, and you wouldn't with the bill. So I'm actually part of, and there are a lot of other things I can go into, but just in the interest of time, I can tell you that, you know, it actually was voted down. The Speaker of the House put it up for a vote, and it was voted down by a pretty wide margin. And there's a group of bipartisan legislators that I'm a part of. I have a bill in the package. I think there's about 12 bills in a bipartisan package to, you know, to adjust and make some changes to our no-fault system here in the state, to address the costs, but not necessarily cut the benefits, including attendant care, fee schedule, there are a bunch of things that we're putting in there to try to rein in some of the costs, but again, not leave people out in the cold if something does happen to them. So we're really pushing to get a hearing on the bills, and I'll keep you posted on that. And then the other issue is with guns, and guns in schools and churches and, like, big event, you know, for big events, there's a loophole in our system right now that you can open-carry in some of these areas, and so the goal is to try to close that. And, you know, my, so I'm the chair of the Gun Violence Prevention Caucus here. I started the Gun Violence Prevention Caucus and am the chair of the caucus. And so we're, you know, really pushing for common sense legislation to mitigate gun violence and not stepping on any Second Amendment rights, but just making sure that, you know, there's certain people that shouldn't have weapons and, you know, in certain places where you shouldn't have weapons as well. And so this is something that went through pretty much along party lines. You did have one Republican, this is on the Senate, it passed out of the Senate, it's going to come over to us in the House. And similar legislation went through in 2012. The governor vetoed it. It was actually, when it went to his desk, it was right around Sandy Hook, and he vetoed it. His big issue was that there is no local control, there's no local opt-out, so otherwise it's just a statewide thing. And so you had actually one Republican senator vote against it for that reason, saying that there wasn't an option for locals to decide where they want to allow weapons. And so it's coming over to the House. I know that I'm a no on that, and I'm going to speak out against it. You know, just this last week, I actually did an op-ed that was in the Free Press, you know, with all the shootings that we've seen across the country, and Texas being the most recent one. You know, I don't think the answer is more guns in more places. And so you pair that with the fact that, you know, 30-some thousand, 33,000, I think, deaths every year from guns. Suicide is one of the top reasons, you know, with gun deaths. And so I have legislation, what's called an extreme-risk protection order. So it's a, it's a bill that, in essence, if someone's making a threatening statement, they're going to harm themselves, they're going to harm someone else, you have no recourse to actually take their weapon away from them until they actually commit a crime. And so if they're making these threatening statements, we should take them seriously, and it serves, it actually is just like a personal protection order. So it goes through a judge, you do get due process, but you have to grant them to be able to take their weapon away from them. And we've seen instances like in California where there was a shooting at, I think it was UCSB. There was a student there, his parents were worried about him, they sent the cops over to check on him, saying that he had a weapon, but the cops, when they checked on him, said, you know, "He seemed fine, so there's really nothing we can do." And then he ended up shooting at the school and killed, I think it was five people, injuring 10. And California passed legislation like this, and now it's on the books in California, Washington, Oregon, and it's also on the books in Indiana and Connecticut. And we have data that shows the amount of lives that have been saved. A lot of times, it's suicide prevention, you know? If they can stop someone before they take their lives, you know, if you do it with a weapon, with a gun, the chances of you surviving are very minimal. And there's data that shows that people that attempt suicide, you know, suicide, if they are unsuccessful, only 10% will ever attempt again because they get the help they need. So we want to give them that opportunity to live a long life and not be successful if they, you know, they attempted it the first time. So that's legislation I'm working on. I encourage people to go take a look at the op-ed that I wrote and submitted that was in the Free Press. So, kind of long, but just wanted to talk to you, those are kind of the two main issues that we're dealing with right now. Along those lines, we're actually on a hunting break this week, so I will not be in Lansing, but I will be here busy in the district. Obviously, I have to go to another commission meeting right after this and meetings throughout the district this week. I will not be hunting, I will not take advantage of this week, but we are off and not in Lansing, but obviously I'll be as busy as I can be here. So with that, really no other updates, but again, just wanted to congratulate you and then also let people know about the community conversation coming up, and then I'm here if you have any other questions.
Thanks.
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
When is the gun legislation coming to the House?
So it went through the Senate, and it has to go through the process in the House. You know, it's going to go through committee. You know, I didn't check offhand. I would guess it went, it's going through the Judiciary Committee, because that's the committee that all the bills that deal with guns have been referred to. So my guess is it's going to go through the Judiciary Committee after, so we're off hunting break and then Thanksgiving week, and then we're back again the week after Thanksgiving. So my guess is you'll see it come up that week. They haven't, it's not on the agenda yet, but I would guess that it's going to come up that week. So... So, and, you know, I encourage people, well, obviously in this community, reach out to me. That's the side I'm on. I've heard from so many, from countless people already. And so, you know, we're worried about the safety of our schools and our communities. So if you have friends that live in, friends and family members that live in other communities around the state, encourage them to reach out to their representatives. You know, this is, most law enforcement that you talk to as well really don't like this. You know, you have people, they always talk about like a good guy versus a bad guy with a gun, but then all of a sudden, if everyone has guns, you don't know who the good guy or the bad guy is in a lot of these instances. And again, I, you know, armed law enforcement officers in uniform, that's one thing. You know, all of a sudden, if you have all these other people who are there, it's a scary situation. It's a scary situation, especially in schools. And again, you go back to the fact that most of the gun violence is from someone getting into their parents, you know, weapons aren't secured properly, aren't stored safely, and that's what happens. And so in a school setting, you know, you have a bunch of young kids. I know there was another op-ed, Katie Jeffrey, who is a principal at one of the schools here in Ferndale that I've known for quite some time. She did an op-ed as well in the Free about the dangers of guns in schools. And so I encourage people to go out and read that as well. So.
Well, thank you for coming, as always. Appreciate the update and great to see you.
Good to see you all. Thank you so much again. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thanks. All right. Our next item of business is called Audience. This is your opportunity, if you're here in the audience, to address counsel on any issue that you'd like that's not on the agenda, because you'll get an opportunity to address us on those issues when we get to that part of the agenda. But if you'd like to come up and give us your name and address and three minutes to speak on anything you'd like that's not on the agenda, please feel free to do so. Mr. O'Donnell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. I am appearing today in my role as School Board Trustee of Ferndale Schools. And just to tag on to Representative Wittenberg's comments on the concealed carry bill, I would also encourage you to check out the op-eds. Katie Jeffrey is a principal at Ferndale Upper Elementary School in our district, wrote a very good op-ed about the implications of concealed weapons in schools. I know that's something our superintendent has talked with Chief Collins about, and it's of great concern. In addition to calling your legislators, I would also encourage you to call the governor. He vetoed a similar bill in 2012, and he needs to hear from people on what a bad idea this is. So if this does reach his desk, he'll veto it again. Just a quick update, our year is off to a great start at Ferndale Schools. We have lots of kids. All the kids that we were planning on showing up have showed up. One of the really innovative things that we're doing in Ferndale Schools is addressing something called social-emotional learning. This is trying to address the needs of the whole child. You know, kids come to us and all of the diversity of different family backgrounds, learning styles, learning abilities. And so one thing that we have really been a leader in is trying to address their whole needs. So our social-emotional learning curriculum has been in place for a couple of years, and now the state of Michigan is going to mandate that all schools have this kind of curriculum in them. And they're using what Ferndale started as an example. So I want to give kudos to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Dina Rushlow, and her team for putting this together along with our teachers. Academics are continuing to grow stronger. We have everything from our preschool and our kindergartners who start working on projects early in our schools, all the way through our high school students who work on projects in classes like Intro to College Biology, where they take apart owl pellets and find the little mouse bones in there and have to reconstruct the skeletons. So they're doing a lot of great stuff. In the buildings themselves, we're doing things like lighting projects. We took out an energy bond, which essentially is paying for a whole bunch of energy efficiency projects, and it's paid back through the savings that are guaranteed, excuse me, through the company that we're using. So you'll see new lighting, HVAC controls, which you won't see, but I should feel more comfortable in the schools. And also DTE donated all of the equipment, labor, and lights for external lighting renovation at the high school, middle school campus. So you'll see LED lights in the parking lots there and attach to the side of the building at no cost to the school district. And the last thing is, our audit is complete. We'll be receiving that in final form at our meeting next Monday. Our fund balance, thanks to a good, strong school year that ended June 30th, 2016, is 15, is over 15% of our expenses. So well above where the state is looking and looking for us to be, and I know Councilwoman Leaks May remembers, we did have some rough years while we sort of reorganized things in the school district, but another great year is in the books, and kids are doing well, and so is our fund balance. So thank you for all of your support and the support from the folks at the library, and we'll continue to work together.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Jim? I won't treat this as a, just so you know, in the future, you can always come and let us know you're coming. We'll put you under presentations. You don't have to do that report under Call to Audience. I didn't realize that's what you were.
Well, I would have been right after Representative Wittenberg.
Indeed.
Which is where I was.
Anyone have any questions, though, for Trustee O'Donnell?
No.
Appreciate you coming. Great update and good to know. Thank you, sir. All right. Anyone else like to address counsel this evening? Sure, come on up, sir. Give us your name and address, and three minutes is yours.
Yes, I'm Dennis T. Leo. 275 East Drayton. I've owned that house for 48 years. And I'm not living in it right now. It's a two-family income. I won't be moving back in the near future and having my grandson live upstairs, I'll live downstairs. It's a flat, and he'll eventually inherit the house and he can go through the same process like I did. I think that's affordable housing, and I encourage people to look into that, to just keep it in the family and go to the next generation.
Yeah.
But the reason I was here this evening is to talk about the drinking fountains in the schools. I did call, I'm very concerned about that just in general, not just with Ferndale, but all the schools in the United States. I actually called Stabinoff and Gary Peters today also, and I also called LK. LK is a manufacturing company based in Chicago. They make the majority of the drinking fountains that you see in all the schools throughout the world, actually. And I wanted to see if they have anything at all that they can do to put filters on the drinking fountains. I made calls to the superintendent of the Schools for Ferndale. I called Rochester, where I happen to reside, and Macomb County. And the one thing that, I don't know, kind of puzzled me is the fact that all the teachers, all the staff seem to use bottled water. They have bottled water in some cases, but all the children drink out of the drinking fountains. And my wife happens to be educational assistant for children that are special needs. I raised a child, she's 24 years old now, can't read or write her till time. That's a burden on everybody and also on the government to take care of her the rest of her life. But there are a lot of special needs children around, and that seems to be escalating all the time. And one of the things I found out from talking to doctors at Hurley Medical Center because of the Flint water crisis is that that's not reversible when a child has a lead poisoning. You can't reverse it. It's more fragile because it's still in development stage at that point in their life. So that's probably why we're having an increase in children that are having problems with the learning disabilities. And the teachers work so hard and their commitment to trying to help educate them so that eventually they could be independent, make a good income, support themselves, and also then they would pay income tax to the state and to the federal government. It seems to be a negative at this point because they're a drain on the economic society financially, and that's a cost for their lives. So I think that the minimal cost that it would be to put in filters on the drinking fountains is well worth the investment because it will lower the chance of someone being, having learning disabilities. So LK, the manufacturing company that does supply these, said they already do offer them, and they even have something on their website. If you go to LK.com, E-L-K-A-Y dot com, you'll see that on their website, that they have people that actually try to even get funding to do whatever they can in order to be able to pay for that. They told me this morning when I called that about, they can get about 3,000 gallons out of one of the, one of the filters they put on a fountain, and that probably should last about a year.
So let me just say, sir, you're at your three minutes, but you are also in luck because we do have a trustee from our school board here. You might want to give him your information, and he can follow up with you or have someone from the school follow up with you.
Yes, I'd like to do that and pursue it and start here with Ferndale, and then hopefully we can do this throughout the U.S. Is what I'd like to see because I think it would be very, very worthwhile. So who would I, who suggests I speak with?
That gentleman that just spoke before you is a trustee on our Ferndale School Board.
Perfect.
And he'd be a good person to give your contact to. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to address counsel this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on from Call to Audience, and we'll move to our next item of business, which is a public hearing. And the public hearing this evening is the confirmation of the sidewalk program tax assessment rule. And Lloyd, you're going to introduce that item before we do the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
The 2017 Sidewalk Improvement Program replaced over 33,000 square feet of defective sidewalk, affected approximately 750 properties, had a cost of almost $230,000. Unfortunately, it did not include anything to do with goats. We're asking council tonight to confirm the tax rule, subject to minor adjustment, which is typical, before we present it to the Finance Director.
All right. And before I do that, did the Sidewalk Hardship Committee meet this year, Lloyd?
We had three calls, and I was here, and one person dropped off some information, and I spoke with the Finance Director, other very small amounts, and that was the adjustment that I was referring to.
Yep. Gotcha. All right. So with that introduction, I will open up this public hearing, and I would ask if there's anyone here from the public that would like to address counsel this evening on the 2017 Sidewalk Program Tax Assessment Program. Is there anyone here that would like to address counsel? Yes, sir. Please come on up and give us your name and address and...
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Darryl McCullough. I live at 1140 Orchard. I'm a relatively new resident. I guess I'm just wondering, with our mill rate being so high, why are taxpayers burdened with the cost of repairing the sidewalks instead of it being covered by our original taxes?
Well, it's a fair question. You want to take the first stab at that or...
Simply the large amount of sidewalk that needs to be replaced and is only looked at once every 10 years. And so we don't go back every year. Everybody property owners responsible, including the city, for any concrete that abuts their property line.
So as a matter of title for this. All right, thank you.
Sorry. Yes.
If I may through the chair?
Yeah, please.
I went through the same thing. I moved in in 2002, and in 2003, I got all of my sidewalks replaced, so I feel your pain.
The only good news is it won't happen again for at least 10 years.
Yes.
Anyone else that would like to address counsel on the sidewalk program?
I'd like to move to confirm the assess, oh, I'm sorry. We're still in public hearing. I apologize.
All right. So seeing none other, we will close the public hearing, and now Councilman Martin.
Sure. I'd like to move to confirm the assessment rule for the Special Assessment Sidewalk District 2017 and to spread the special assessments on the 2017 winter tax rule unless granted deferment by the Hardship Committee.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollock. Now discussion. And I would just say, Darryl, I don't think I caught your last name, but there is, if it is a financial hardship, we do offer you an opportunity to spread the payments out over, is it three years, I believe, on your?
Three years, 5%.
At 5%. So that's just an option, just know that that's an option as well. Any discussion on this item? All right. Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Holter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless council pulls something from the consent agenda. Let me read the amended consent agenda items now. Item A is the approval of the September 25th, 2017 regular meeting minutes and the October 23rd, 2017 regular meeting minutes. Item B is the approval of the request to backfill two police officer positions and one dispatcher. Item C is the approval of the inter-local agreement for the My Life Health Clinic to include the cities of Royal Oak, Madison Heights, Oak Park, and Hazel Park, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Item D is the approval of the lease agreement with Ferncare for the second site for the My Life Clinic and authorize the city manager to sign those documents. Item E is the approval of ordinance number 1202 to amend Chapter 16, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 1, in general, to amend Section 16-12 of the Ferndale Code as submitted by the Director of Special Events. Item F is the approval of the 2017 Traffic Signal Modernization Program DTE easement Agreement contingent upon the city attorney and city insurance carriers' approval. Item G is the approval of listed accounts to be charged as a lien against their respective properties and to be collected as special assessments with the December 1st, 2017 tax rule as submitted by the Finance Director. Item H is the authorization for the mayor to sign the sub-recipient agreement to access 2017 CDBG funds as submitted by the Community and Economic Development Director. Item I is the approval of the extension of the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission through December 31st, 2018. Item J is the authorization for the mayor to sign and execute the letter of understanding dated September 25th, 2017 between the Ferndale POLC and the City of Ferndale. Item K is the adoption of a resolution regarding the placement of flags in the City of Ferndale Council Chambers as submitted by the city attorney. Item L is the approval to implement the retirement provision of 25 years of service for those members of the IAFF in the defined benefit program and to authorize the city manager to forward the actuary report to the Police and Fire Board. Item M is the approval of the provision of free parking in all downtown municipal metered downtown parking spaces during Small Business Saturday on November 25th, 2017. Item N is the approval of the Ferndale City Council reaffirms its approval for the mayor to execute the reimbursement agreement for Ferndale House dated April 25th, 2016, and to authorize the mayor to execute the proposed security agreement, assignment and consent to assign as presented, as approved by the Ferndale Brownfield Redevelopment Authority on November 9th, 2017. Item O, approval of the proposed smart vehicle lease agreement contingent upon obtaining appropriate insurance. And, no, not finally. Item P is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee. And finally, item Q is the resolution in support of the Small Business Saturday. All right. That's a lot. First of all, is there a motion?
Questions of clarity?
Questions of clarity first, absolutely.
Okay. If I may through the chair, on item L, it says that the actuary report is forwarded to the Police and Fire Board. Is that accurate or is it the Pension Board?
Oh, I should say, yeah, you're right. You should say Pension Board.
Pension Board?
I missed the word. Makes a difference.
Yep, it does. Because we do have one of those. Good catch.
And then unless I'm missing, for 7A, I don't see that the minutes are included in the packet.
Sorry, that's my...
Oh, that's fine. I wish I, I'm sorry I didn't catch it earlier, but so we can approve item A tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. So with that, I will move that we approve the consent agenda, removing items A and making the amended change to item L, reflecting the Police and Fire Pension Board.
Support.
And a close one, we'll give the support to Leaks May. Moved by Martin. Now is our discussion. Yeah, Jordan.
Mayor, council, if I may, on item H, just a small correction. The numbers in the sub-recipient agreement are mistakenly from a previous program year. So with the pleasure of council, I'd like to give you the correct numbers for that sub-recipient agreement so they can be in that motion. I'll quickly go through those.
Yeah, please do. Council, you're on item H, he has updated numbers, just so you know.
So, and this reflects the one-time windfall we're receiving from Oakland County for the 17 program year.
Yeah, please do.
Yes.
Counsel, you're on item H. He has updated numbers, just so you know.
So, and this, this reflects the one-time windfall we're receiving from Oakland County for the '17 program year. And so the total, where you'll see up there says 75,351. That should read $109,622. So that's your total. If you look down to the four bullet point activities, the first one, code enforcement, should be deleted. The second one, yard services, the total there should read $8,924. The second one, haven, should read $3,000. Parks and recreational facilities should read $87,000, or, I'm sorry, $87,698. And then you should add a final activity, public service activity, emergency services, and that should be $10,000.
Does everybody have that? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other clarifications on the consent agenda? Oh, no, we can have discussion now. Questions, comments on the consent agenda? All right. Martin, would you call the role?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. Those items are adopted.
I just want to make sure that with that amendment, that was already included in the?
Which one?
The amendments to?
Yeah, item H, yes. As amended.
Okay.
To clarify the note, yes. The consent agenda as amended. All right. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is the consideration of Wilson Park Village Development Street Naming. Jordan.
Counsel, long time no see. So the first item here is, again, as you said, so city policy requires that naming of streets go before council for consideration. So this one's fairly straightforward from the community meetings on this project, which is the 28 single-family homes on the former Wilson School Site. The neighborhood had suggested that one of those streets be named Wilson Street. So that's what's here before you. I'm happy to take any questions you have on that.
They didn't like Coulter Avenue?
It didn't seem to take.
Funny that didn't come up. All right. Is there any questions about that? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the naming of Wilson Street? Street or avenue? I'm sorry.
I think it should be avenue. Sounds better.
What's the difference? But anyway, is there anyone from the public that would like to address us on the naming of this street as Wilson Street? All right. A motion would be in order.
I'll move the city council approve the proposal to name the new north slash south street Wilson Street in the Wilson Park Village Development with the following findings and conditions as listed in the packet.
Is there support?
Support.
All right. Moved by Martin, supported by Leaks May. Now discussion. Wilson Street? What is the difference between a street and a road and an avenue and a boulevard? Boulevards usually have a median, I think, maybe.
Correct. Yeah, I think so.
But I don't really, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm just curious.
I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can, I will check with Justin and get back to you all on that.
I think it has to do with the size of the street. Like, an avenue is wider than a street.
What about a road?
True.
Is that true, chief? Thought we could learn a little something here while we're...
Find out. You want me to Google it?
We could Google it. All right. At any rate, other discussion, comments?
I don't know what's a court.
The name, well, a court would be...
I do have a question. I just, so I remember a while back, there was a, a call out for the residents to kind of have input as far as that naming. Did they have input in this, or was it just done?
That was the, the name, if I remember correctly, that was the name that kind of jumped out at some of the community meetings that we had, just going with the name of the school, kind of keeping that name alive.
If I may through the chair, an avenue is traditionally a straight road with a line of trees or shrubs running along each side, which emphasize arrival at a landscaper architectural feature. A boulevard is usually a widened, multilane arterial street with a median, and with median and landscaping between the curbs and sidewalks on either side. And a street is just that, a street.
Are you serious?
Sometimes a street is a street.
Well, I think it's an appropriate name. And by the way, it's, it's, I guess we're naming it after the school, but we're really naming it after the president, which is what most of our schools were named after.
Woodrow Wilson, yes.
Right? So it's really being named after the former president. Not that that matters. I don't think he's a president dipped in hot water politically these days, right? He's still politically correct to name something after him. So Wilson Street it is. Excellent. Any further discussion? Martin, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you, Jordan. The next item of business is a consideration of a, of the 1011 Livernoy License Agreement, and that, Jordan, is you as well.
Yes. So this is, for those of you who don't know the address by heart, this is the former seasonal corner florist shop on Livernoy and Marshall. We have some folks who represent the new ownership here today, if there are any questions. But they have been hard at work, working hand-in-hand with the CED department on freshening that place up and giving it a new look. And as part of that, we, staff worked with them on this agreement, and we also owe a lot of thanks to Dan Chris, the city attorney, in helping put this lease agreement together, which essentially allows them to reconstruct, I'm sorry, replace the existing fence with a new one, without having to unduly tear down and redo the existing awning structure that they have. So they want to keep some of that open-air-market feel to the floral shop that there, that used to be there. They're going to be replacing it with a new one. So this will allow them to keep the same footprint with a, with a new fence instead of the existing one, because the existing fence does encroach into city property. But what it does is it protects us in that we have access rights, and if we have to go in there, while we would replace the street and the surface like we would anywhere else, they would have to, at their own cost, kind of replace their own fence.
Through the chair, just a point of clarification. It's actually a license, not a lease, so it's not an interest in property. It is revocable at the city's discretion.
Okay.
Should the city determine that it needs the particular portion of the right-of-way.
Say that again. It's not a li, it's not...
It's a license.
It's a license, not a lease.
It's permission to utilize the property by the city, but the city has the right to terminate the license at any time.
And the police department has no issue, Captain? Appreciate it. All right. Shall I make a motion?
A motion would be in order.
I move that the city council approve the proposed license agreement for 1011 Livernoy.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Leaks May and supported by Martin. Any questions or comments?
I, I do have a question. So in the drawings, it shows a stone base to a, looks like a wrought iron fence, but it does have the words "Omit Stonewall." Am I correct in saying that it is just going to be a wrought iron fence, or? Okay.
Come on up, yeah. And just introduce yourself anyway. We're happy to meet the new owners.
Thank you. My name is Mark Bolash, and Scott Wright is my business partner. So originally, we had settled on a couple different ideas, but we're just going to go with iron to replace, wrought iron to replace the existing fence.
The cyclone fence?
Yep. The, looks a little bit more like a correctional facility right now. We're going to beautify it a little bit, make it more of an inviting space, but ultimately, yeah, no Stonewall.
Okay.
Does the name stay the same?
No, it is not. It's changing. It's Olive's Bloom Box.
Oh, excellent. Best, best of luck to you.
Yeah, questions, just comment. Congratulations on the new business, guys.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Yep. Other questions or comments?
Nope.
All right. Martin, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. Good luck to you. Appreciate it. All right. Next item of business is a consideration to set up, to set a public hearing, so not to discuss the issue, but to set a public hearing, to vacate a portion of the Vester Right-of-Way. Jordan, that's you as well?
Nope. So this item, as you said, Mayor, is a hearing to set a hearing, if you will. So essentially, we have some folks from Search Optics here as well, if you have questions of them. But what's happened over on their campus, they've acquired several of the properties, in fact, just about all of them, I believe, around their headquarters, which is a brownfield at 1938 Burdette, their, their headquarters building. And in their efforts to master plan that area, one of the things that they've worked with staff on is incorporating that portion of Vester Street, which sort of separates their building with Voyager Restaurant, and incorporating that into development plans. And so you'll notice in here that, that half of the, the street would go to Search Optics, which is the majority property owner on both sides, except for a portion that abuts an ITC piece of property, a little triangle toward the east side. So half of that piece would go to ITC, and we're engaged with them in conversation in terms of making sure that whatever we plan, collaborative with Search Optics around that property, whatever their vision is, it works with ITC, and they maintain the access they need. So again, this is really just to sort of introduce the topic and then put a, put in place, put in motion a public hearing for that vacation request.
Which would happen in December, December 18?
Correct. For the council meeting of December 18, 2017.
Gotcha. All right. Questions of clarification? All right. A motion would be in order.
Well, I do have a question.
Okay.
Search Optics owns 620 Vester?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because I knew when the restaurant was going in, there were some concerns with the resident that was living here, so since then, you must have just the building, so.
Gotcha.
Thanks.
All right. A motion would be in order.
I'll move that we schedule a public hearing for the Ferndale City Council meeting of December 18, 2017, at 7:00 p.m., 300 East Nine Mile Road, relative to the vacating of those portions of the right-of-way, described as that part of the platte Vester Street line adjacent to the lots 19 through 31, including Block 1, as described in the packet, and to direct the city clerk to publish the public hearing notice as required in the city charter.
Support.
Moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Now, questions, comments, discussion? And, and I realize this is just about putting it on the agenda in December, but I'm going to look at the fire chief and say, there's no access issues here in terms of, I don't know what you'd get at the train tracks or something, but...
You'd have full access, I mean.
Yeah. All right. Other comments? Nope. All right. We, it's been moved and supported. Martin, would you call the role?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. We will have that public hearing on December 18. And the next item is for yet another public hearing for December 18, and that would be the consideration to set a public hearing to vacate a portion of the Plantavon and West Breckenridge Alley, correct?
Yes. It's vacation season, and this request is...
[laughing]
So this request is a bit of a strange circumstance. It was actually a piece that was thought to have already been vacated, and we discovered that it was not during repair, where, sort of a Murphy's Law situation, where the contractor's principal passed away, the company folded up, and so in their quest to get the repairs done, when it came time for their insurer to sign off on the repairs, they realized that the property was not in their possession. So we worked with them, and many thanks to the clerk's office. Barb was a huge help in, in working this through. The neighbors signed a petition to, to go after this, and we are fully supportive of helping them do that. So again, this would be another one that would be on December 18, 2017.
Is there a motion? Or questions?
All right. I move to schedule a public hearing for the Ferndale City Council meeting of December 18, 2017, 7 o'clock, here at city, here at City Hall, relating to vacating those portions of the alley described below.
Yes. Support.
All right. Moved by Leaks May, supported by Pollocka. Now questions, comments, discussion? This doesn't have to go to anyone else, planning or, I don't know who, no. This would, this would be their opportunity if there's residents who are opposed, but has, has any surfaced?
Not to our knowledge.
Right. Okay. All right. Other questions or comments?
Nope.
All right. Martin, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Our last regular agenda item this evening is a consideration of a purchase agreement for 507 Edgewood Place, the city-owned vacant lot adjacent to that property, correct?
Yes. So this is another one where it's been on the books for quite some time, and it's essentially a non-buildable sliver adjacent to 507 Edgewood Place. So we got approached by the owner of that home, wishing to procure this piece of property so that they could extend essentially their yard, potentially even put a garage on it. So they're currently doing repairs on 507 Edgewood Place. So we worked with them, and we actually reached out to our residential properties that the city owns are typically listed through Jim Schaefer and Associates. We reached out to them for what they call a comparative market analysis, and also got a second opinion from Oakland County's Department of Equalization. Essentially, because the lot is non-buildable, excuse me, and it's really of no value to anyone really intrinsically other than that adjacent homeowner, you, you can see in your packet the method by which Oakland County, sort of under, sort of not these circumstances, it might be worth a little bit more, but both Jim Schaefer and Associates and Oakland County felt the offer of $500 was fair. It gets it on the tax rolls, makes that property more valuable, and basically gives a piece of property that wouldn't really be of any use to anyone else, including the city, to a homeowner that could use it to add value to their home.
Are the homeowners here? Are there property owners here?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Are there any questions of clarification first, before we get to... All right. A motion would be in order.
I move that Ferndale City Council approve the sale of the city-owned parcel 25-34-402-013 for a total of $500, and further authorize the mayor to execute the purchase agreement, exclusive right to sell contract with Jim Schaefer and Associates, and any other instrumental necess, and any other instruments necessary to complete the sale. necess, and any other instruments necessary to complete the sale, proceeds to be deposited into account 101-371-673.000. Sale of city property.
Is there support? Moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah, please.
Does the $500 cover any of the costs that we have in, in doing this transaction?
Yes, it was fairly nominal, I mean, essentially, a few minutes of research and, and kind of putting it together, so it, it more than covers those costs.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not paying to, you know...
Right.
To give the land away, so, okay.
It is a good deal.
It's a great point. It's a great deal.
But he rolled his eyes, he rolled his eyes at Coulter Boulevard, so I don't think Coulter Park would be, you'd be amenable to naming it a park, so I guess we'll, might as well sell it to you. No, appreciate it. Any, any other questions or comments about this?
No.
Truly, seriously, we're really serious here, honestly. No, this is great, and if this helps you improve your lot, that's all the better, appreciate it. And, as you said, it's, I mean, it's, it's a great deal, but it's not really worth that to anyone else except for you, so I can't imagine why we wouldn't want to do it.
And it's one less sliver of land that we have to be responsible for.
Amen.
That's exactly right. All right. If there's no other questions, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thanks, gentlemen, for sticking with us. All right. That concludes the regular agenda, and I will move on to call to council. I see Captain Palazzolo, anything from the police department for the good of the community this evening, sir?
Good evening, one quick thing, I'd like to mention a partnership between the Ferndale Police Department and the Southeast Coalition. Approximately a year and a half ago, we got a drug drop box at the police department. Last six months, we pulled 150 pounds' worth of prescription pills out of there. We do understand that there's some residents that are transportation-challenged, so they can't actually get up here. So Sergeant Brown, our community engagement officer, has agreed to start a program where he'll go around and pick up medications...
Thanks.
...from residents.
That's awesome.
They can call him at 248-584-2595, or they can send him an email at bbrown@ferndalepolice.org.
And is that anytime, or is there a specific time, a year?
He's going to do it once, once a month, he'll come around and, and pick those up. He's also going to drop off, it's called the Tura, this was purchased by the Southeast Coalition, he'll drop one of these off with the residents, you open the packet up, you put the prescription pills in there, you fill it with water, shake it up, and then it deactivates it, and you can go ahead and throw these away. So these are also available, you can hold a Sergeant Brown if you have a need for one of these.
That's wonderful, thank you.
If I may through the chair, Captain, is there any updates, maybe next time you could bring to our Narcan usage and what we're seeing there?
I could bring the updated numbers up to you.
That would be appreciated, thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael, anything from special events?
Yes, sir.
All right. Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening?
Not at this time, room.
All right. Did Lorraine slip out on me?
She did, she did.
Okay, cool. How about from the finance department, anything this evening? Nope, community and, uh, community and communications. I'm screwing that up, but you know what I mean.
Good evening, I might be stepping on Lloyd's toes here, but I'm working with Lloyd's staff to make sure that we communicate ahead of holidays how it's going to impact trash pickup and other services. So we met briefly today, and I just want to let residents know, for Thanksgiving week next week, trash pickup, normally scheduled for Thursday and Friday, will both be delayed. So Thursdays will be picked up Friday, Fridays will be picked up Saturday. That goes for bagged yard waste as well. And then, when it comes to yard, like yard brush piles, Thursdays will be picked up a day ahead of schedule, on Wednesdays, Fridays will be picked up the following Monday. I don't expect anybody to remember that. It's all going to be on our website and on our social media starting tomorrow morning. So if anybody has any questions, they can head there and find that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Kara.
All right, how about from DPW this evening? All right.
Just a point of interest for council is that the, as you probably are aware, that there has not been a lot of leaf fall this year. And so, that means it's probably going to come down all at once.
It will.
So a couple of things, is that we certainly are evaluating the situation from week to week, and we're providing the manpower needed based upon the load of leaves that are in the given section. Our last week is supposed to be three weeks from now, so this week and two more, the end of November. Depending upon the weather, because obviously if we get three or four inches of snow between now and then, that may negate the situation for us, because we won't be able to do leaf pickup in snow, and we also have to change the equipment over. So, although it will be, you know, a task for the DPW, I certainly hope to see some change in weather that will allow the leaf to drop to occur, and I encourage people to get their lawns raked and to the curb on their week, and DPW will do their, their best to assign the resources to get the job done.
By their nature, cannot throw a curveball to our DPW.
And, and people do ask about our timelines. We try to service the city on, in an equal basis as possible, so each year we have to start somewhere, and, you know, essentially DPW goes where the leaves are. And so, certainly there are more leaves to pick up in areas that have more trees. In addition to that, I can tell you that the state regulates how long landfill, yard waste landfills can be opened. And so they'll be closing our last pickup for yard waste is the week of the December 11th. And so, you know, we'd like to try to give people an opportunity that if there's a small amount of yard waste they want to dispose of, to put it in yard waste bags and get it out before they receive a ticket for having a pile of leaves in the, in the street, perhaps they missed their pickup, because they didn't have them out in time. And so there's a, there's a date that we work backwards from, and we, that's required by law, and then also, you know, we hope for the best as far as the trees cooperating.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Jordan, anything else from economic developments this evening? All right. Marty, anything from the clerk's office?
Well, we had an election last week, and it went very well. Turnout was about 10%, which was rather low, but given the uncontested offices, not terribly surprising. For, I think probably the first time ever, we had more absentee voters than we did people voting in the precincts, which meant that fewer people got to experience our fabulous new voting equipment, but those who did loved it. And it, the day went really well, all the machinery worked great, and we're really excited to have it in place finally.
Well done, thank you. April, anything for the city manager's office?
Just to note that next week is Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving to everybody, but that does mean that City Hall has different hours, which means that we will not be open on Thursday and Friday, of course. So, we resume back again on Monday, as scheduled.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right. Councilman Martin?
Just, it breaks my heart to hear the city manager say next week is Thanksgiving already, but I do want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, that's it.
Councilwoman Leaks May?
Well, a couple of items. First of all, the Just for Kicks Adult Talent Show, which is a fundraiser for the Ferndale Schools PTA, is going on at the Loving Touch on November 18th at 7 o'clock, 21 and over, folks, please, and it's $15 at the door. It's always a good show. It's a, a show put on by parents, teachers, and, well, adults in the community.
When are you going to have the city council act? I'm serious, yeah, next year.
All right. Also, I'd like to want, also congratulate Mayor Coulter for winning the Lifetime Achievement Award, awarded to you through the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
And one last thing, last, was it last week? October 31st was officially declared as Day of the Bat. I don't know if you remember, but the, the Ferndale Blockheads, the Lego League, they came to council and proposed a resolution that we declare October 31st the Day of the Bat, and they asked for permission, for permission for a bat house to be installed. Well, that has been done, there was an, there was on, on October 31st, there was a grand opening, a ribbon cutting, if you so will, and I just wanted to show pictures of how proud they are, and, and their little, their little bat mat to welcome all the bats to the native gardens at Ferndale Upper Elementary School, so.
That's awesome. That's a great job.
And I just, you know, I just love that these fourth and fifth graders, they just, they came to council, and they were a part of change, and I think it's encouraging to show that we have some little leaders that want to be involved in local government, and they can...
Absolutely.
...affect change if they so really want to, so it was really nice, it was really nice, and they're very proud of themselves, too. All right. I believe that is it for me.
Well, thank you. Councilman Pollocka?
Just two things. One, I want to add on to what Lloyd was sharing about leaf pickup, is if you can't get your leaves to the street, you can always put them in your garden, in your flower beds. They're actually very good nutrients over the winter, and it's kind of a blanket for your flowers, so that's what I usually tend to do every year. And, second is, I want to thank everybody for coming out and voting on Tuesday. I don't take an uncontested election, this is actually my second uncontested election. I don't take it very lightly. I, I really am honored to be able to serve with incredible people on council, and to be able to serve an incredible community, so, thank you.
One, one item that I just want to note, last week, we did the mayor's business council, and we had a wonderful gathering, and had a great discussion about just economic trends in general and how they're impacting our business. But before that, Jack Aronson, who's the former owner of Garden Fresh, who sold that to Campbell a couple of years back, is now involved in a really cool project called